Good morning, everyone. Good morning, and welcome. We're glad to have you here to participate in your county government. This time I will call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session to order, and Brian can bring up the citizen wishes to speak, please. Have any phones that are still on? Take that, please. Thank you, sir. We are blessed to have Ron Cooper from the Rock Church bring us our invitation and lead us in the place of flag. Ron, thanks for being here. Stand is grateful.
Let's pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we pray today for this meeting. Lord, I pray for all that are here. Lord, we ask you, Jesus, to guide this meeting to the greatest level of productivity that's available in the time given. Lord, we pray that you will bless our leaders with great strength. I pray that you will bless this meeting with great wisdom. Lord, I pray for the great and productive meeting. I pray that your blessing be upon each one of us. Your hand of grace and love and mercy be here in this place. In all things, Lord, we give thanks in your name, Jesus. Sing that.
Amen.
Pastor Cooper, thank you so much. Coming, beautiful prayer. Under minutes, the September 20, 2018 work session minutes and the September 20, 2018 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, as we start out with our positively Paulding segment today, our great public information workers have produced the highlights of the Paulding Celebrity Classic that occurred on September 21st, 2018.
For tonight's game of ABO baseball, brought to you by the Alternative Baseball Organization, between the Paulding County celebrities and your team, ABO.
ABO!
Red ball, that's right.
Hey, everybody, this is Bernie Colette, Commissioner of Folks Three. I'm out here tonight for Paulding Celebrity Classic. If you want to have fun, all of you out there understand that you've got your friends and us all guys, we're going to get the best we can, but you never know.
My name is Taylor Duncan. I am 22 years old. I am originally from Dallas, Georgia, and I am the CEO, Fisher, and founder of Alternative Baseball Organization. Here tonight, we have our inaugural Celebrity Classic, featuring our players playing against a team of Paulding's most influential figures. For more information on our program, you can log on to www.alternativede Baseball.org. Our program is for those 15 and over, and we're constantly looking for new players to join our program. So if you're 15 or older, regardless of whatever level of experience in baseball you've ever played, go on Alternativete Baseball.org today and fill out the player pool application.
It's time to do an ask from the Paulding County celebrities as they move off this ladder and run. Fabulous. Then, once again, tonight's final score, ABO, 12, Paulding County celebrities, 11.
Lot of fun. Anybody want to mention anything else about it?
I enjoyed it. Y'all know a little baseball more than most, and I had a good time out there. It was a great organization. They always done a lot with that. I thought it was great. Those guys came ready to play, and I loved how they weren't going to listen to anybody who was going to tell them they weren't going to whoop up on us. And they did. We gave them one for the money, though, but at the end, they pulled it out. But it was a good game out of that.
One of the highlights was watching you dodge the hit ball in the first and second.
The scabs on my knee are healing well. But I did not get hit by the ball. So, good play. Also, I got on base twice. How'd you do that?
I had a short number. Okay. All right. Okay, next, we've got a special presentation that's going to be conducted by Baker Street, Frank Baker, presentation of the Make-A-Wish of Georgia from the Paulding Rides for Wishes. Frank?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to come up here. We're not going to do this from the podium, so we wanted to try to do something a little bit different today. So if we could ask some Make-A-Wish of Georgia folks to come up. We recently had the, called the Ride, Paulding County Ride for Wishes event. The sponsor was, it's all sponsored from the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Georgia. And we've got Tim Early here today with us, and Jay Lee Welsh here. I had a chance to spend some time with these guys on Saturday for another event that I'm involved with, and I told them, I said, "I'm really excited. I'm going to get to see you again in just a couple of days." But today, we're here to present a check, which is our goal. And up here on y'all, on everybody's left, the Commissioner's right, we've got the sponsorship banner that we flew that morning of the event. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, you've got a list of all our platinum and gold sponsors. Would you mind?
Yes, sir. I would like to read these out under the platinum level sponsors, and I'd like to ask if there's anyone representing any of these companies in the audience to stand and let us recognize you. CNL Contractors, Croy Engineering LLC, Psychology Bike Shop, Harley Chevrolet. I'd like to recognize Mr. Renee Gordon and Natalie Ford, and all y'all coming up, because we want to take a picture here in a minute. Paulding Chamber of Commerce, the Skipper Law LLC, Wamick Equipment Trailer Incorporated. Are you standing for that? Oh, you're the next one. Wamick Truck Body Incorporated. Police is representing them. Under the gold level sponsors, we had Action Electrical and Mechanical Incorporated, Dickerson Heating and Air LLC, Greystone Power Company, Parker Fiber Net LLC, Sam's Larkin &amp; Huff, and Brawley LLP, and finally, Waterworks Group LLC. So, let's get them hanging.
Well, we're real excited today, because we actually, after all of the donations and the things that we had to take care of, we're able to present a check today for $13,000. I'm going to grab that check back and let Tim say a few words that he might do.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks to everyone. Good morning to all of you. We were so excited when Frank first approached us about Paulding Ride for Wishes, and then when we heard about the results of the day as well, we were just really blown away. $13,000 for our first-time event especially, at any time, is an amazing feat, so what you guys did was amazing. And I think last time I spoke with you, obviously, we had 14 kids in Paulding County waiting for their wishes. We have three that are actually decided. This $13,000 goes a long way in making sure we grant every one of these wishes. And for an event like this, you know, what's so special about it? It's not just the dollars raised, it's that one single magic ingredient that's a part of every event we do and every wish we grant, and that's community. And from your leadership, to everyone that came out, to everyone who organized it, to our sponsors, that's what makes this so special. And that ability to come together and take care of all the kids right here in Paulding, it's a special thing. These wishes aren't nice-to-haves, they're not just special things we can do to add on. They really make a big difference in the lives of these kids and these families when they get lost. So it's a special thing you guys are doing, and we can't thank you enough for being a part of the community and allowing us to be part of the community with you. Thank you.
This is sort of like going to a political function where you have so many people that are involved, and you don't want to leave anybody out. But at this time, if it's all right with the board, I'd like to ask all of the individuals who are involved with the steering committee, those who helped. There's enormous amount of employee assistance with this on the day of the event and prior to. So if you had anything to do with it, I'd just like for everybody to come up and have a picture with the board, if that's okay.
Great. I'm going to balance on either side of the banner. Is that the banner, Ms. Senator?
Yes.
Yeah, push the check up just a little bit.
And lastly, under announcements, we have Ms. Lori Ashmore, who's the water system director, that's going to announce about a special day coming up to tour Richland Creek Reservoir. Lori?
As you know, over the last few years, we've done a lot of tours out to our Richland Creek Reservoir project, but the demand continues to grow, the interest of our community continues to grow in seeing this important project. So we have set October the 19th, it's a Friday afternoon, to do tours of the site. And I'd like to play a little clip that Kelly filmed within last week or the week before.
Hi, this is Kelly Comstock, program manager with the Richland Creek Water Supply Program. If you've always wanted to see a major project under construction, now's your chance. We're offering an opportunity for the public to come out and tour the RCR construction. If you're interested, we're going to be holding a field day on October 19th, which is a Friday, and allowing up to 100 people from the public to sign up in advance to take part in a tour. It'll last about an hour, see all of the ongoing construction activities.
We have tours set up from noon through 4:00 PM. The last one starts at 4:00 PM, and I'm happy to report that at this point, we have 57 slots have already been filled with people who have signed up for that, to see the project that afternoon, leaving about 43 spaces still available. We encourage people to sign up at rcrwater.com and click on the link under Recent News, and it's our field day link, and it will take you right to where you can sign up to join us for one of the tours that afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have more than 100, we're going to have another day.
We're going to plan on having these sporadically, probably another one in the spring.
Thank you, again. We have no invited guests. Under bid awards, discuss action to award the 2018 Asphalt Project One contract to the low bidder, Barto Paving Incorporated, in the amount of $3,788,000. Let me repeat that. $3,789,706.76, Ms. Paulard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is always fine. We have, this is probably one of the most outreachings bids we issue, so we catch a lot of citizens by the time we go into, I think this one catches 38 subdivisions and 150 streets. It's resurfacing to, for milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing. We had four participants in this project, and we are recommending award to the lowest bidder, Barto Paving, in the amount of $3,789,706.76. And this will resurface approximately 28.374 miles. And Kelly, question about specific streets, George has more information.
And George, we've noticed that there's more competition among other counties and municipalities that the cost per mile is going up.
Definitely, it has increased a lot over the last 10 years especially. The last two particularly have gone since we've seen the economic uptick, but, you know, we're doing what we can to try to keep the costs low, get as much paving as we can. But I want to bring a couple more specifics to the project. It has a completion date of June 30th of 2019. So if we have good enough weather during the winter time, we'll be able to pave. We'll monitor that to make sure that the conditions are acceptable enough for paving. This is going to be taken out of LMC funding that we received from GDO earlier this year. There's going to be a general fund match in the rest of the funds, which is $1,400,000 is going to be coming out of spaws. Barto Paving was the low bidder on this contract. They've done paving for us in the past. The last construction work they did for us was at North Paulding High School. We've been acceptable with their work. So if you have any questions, I can hopefully answer them.
No questions, thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Reports from committees and departments. David Mumford with 911 Director to speak on the staff assisting with Hurricane relief recently.
I appreciate the opportunity to give you a little bit of information on a couple of our heroes behind the headsets, which we don't hear about very much, but they're actually out in the audience. Even Savannah may come up. Got to stand up front while I talk about this. If you ever wonder to do 911 calls when we need help, this is, you gotta go up in the middle. The telecommunication or telecommunicator emergency response task force. That's who 911 calls when 911 needs assistance. And so back when Hurricane Florence was slamming into the Carolinas, Sunday the 16th, I got a telephone call from one of the state 911 coordinators, or Turk team coordinators, and he was asking if Paulding County had any employees that we could deploy, possibly deploy up to North Carolina to assist with the relief efforts inside the 911 center. And so within the hour, me contacting the deputy director, Savannah and Eve were at the 911 center on their day off, mind you, getting all their paperwork together and getting ready to send that up to the state so they could be ready in case the deployment order came out, which it did about, probably about three hours afterward, we were notified that they were going to deploy a team of eight telecommunicators to Sampson County, North Carolina. What we see on the news, we see all the air rescues, the helicopter rescues, the responders who go out in the field, and they make, you know, bring all the people to safety. What we don't see a lot is where do they get that information, where do they get those calls? And from the beginning, excuse me, from the beginning of Hurricane Florence, the 911 communicators and the different 911 centers have been working for days straight even before the hurricane hit. And then afterwards, they, of course, were stuck at their 911 centers and were continuing to work. So I've got some, so I was told to have, that our folks were going to, not in the word that I wanted to put on. I don't see what's there. Well, anyway, on Monday, they were leaving from GMA headquarters at 1:00, and Savannah and Eve joined a group of telecommunicators from the city of Roswell, from Haverson County, Baldwin County, and Cherokee County. And they all, they all got together in a caravan, they drove up to North Carolina. They were going to Sampson County to relieve that 911 center, who had the employees that had been working for probably seven or eight days straight. They had a little bit of difficulty getting there. They got into North Carolina and realized that from the time that they left Georgia until the time they arrived, that the roads had been closed and the flood was rising, so their route into Sampson County was completely blocked. So they had to go back to the North Carolina, South Carolina border. They met with a North Carolina state trooper. He then escorted them to a Baptist mission where other first responders were sheltered until they could get to where they, so they spent the first night in a Baptist mission shelter with several state troopers and National Guardsmen who were there for their relief efforts. They were able to get a shower and get some food and kind of get some rest and regroup for the next morning. And they called the incident command, they got a different route to Sampson County, they were probably about an hour away. And so they arrived about 10:00 Tuesday morning, and I guess when they got there, what they encountered was a group of telecommunicators who'd been working for about eight days straight. And if you remember, if you think about it, these folks still hadn't had the opportunity to go and take care of their own family and their, and their personal needs. Their houses had been impacted, their family had been impacted, and they were there taking calls that entire time. So when our team arrived on, from Georgia arrived, then they were split into day and night shift, and the goal was for them to, after about an hour of training, hour of training on equipment that was completely foreign to them, they were going to take over some of the responsibilities in the 911 center so that these employees could take two-day breaks, get everything in order, and then come back to work. So I think Eve worked night shift, and Savannah worked day shift, and they were taking calls. And it's the wishes, the easier part, so that you might turn on the radios and the code and signals and stuff, so they were taking calls from the citizens, and that allowed the Sampson County 911 employees to take a break and go home for a couple of days. Because they were there, they were actually able to come back and, I think, function back at their normal schedule by Friday, as you guys said. So I got a couple of, I think, the, if you look at our concept now of Team Paulding, this, this part of Team Paulding actually went above and beyond to go to another state into an area or into circumstances even with potentially put their lives at danger. They left their family and their friends behind at a momentous notice to go up and help, you know, their brothers and sisters in public safety in another state. So I have some quotes here from both of them that I thought I would share. They, they kind of gave me a summary of what, what this was right, so. Let's see. Eve said that they, "We arrived at Sampson County Emergency Services on Tuesday morning around 10:00. We were welcomed by people who had been working for seven to eight days in a row without a chance to return to their homes since Hurricane Florence had hit. Many of the Sampson County 911 employees lived in the county or surrounding counties, and their homes had sustained damage of some degree. These amazing telecommunicators kept asking us what they could do for us before they left. They had given themselves selflessly of themselves to their community during a natural disaster for over a week, and were still looking for ways to help others. Our presence meant that they could go home for a day or two and then get back into their regular work schedule." And then Savannah said that we were a little concerned about how we would be received by the exhausted and overworked staff at Sampson County. We couldn't have been more wrong. They were the most welcoming and gracious people, and it was hard to believe what they had been going through. They had been working nonstop since before the hurricane made landfall on Thursday, and most were living at the dispatch center by the time that we arrived. They were constantly asking how they could help us or what we needed, and of course, we were there to help them. Like I said, they dropped everything on their day off, they went to the 911 center, got their paperwork ready, and were on the road within 24 hours to relieve these folks up in North Carolina. I mean, we couldn't ask for a better group of employees. And, yeah, several, but they didn't. I think this is where you guys slept at least one night. So they had some wooden bunk beds made up, they got a chance to sleep on Monday night. The rest of the time, you were on air mattresses. And this was actually inside the dispatch center in Sampson County, and that's where they, where they worked for the week. They actually came back on Friday, so they were, they were there, they were on Monday through Friday. And then just outside of the Sampson County Emergency Management Service, and that's where they were, where they were working. When we receive a call or something like this, I think it's important that we respond, even though it took our resources outside the state. We have to remember that if something were to happen to us, these are the people who would respond and help us. And so it's just very important, the state of Georgia put together the Telecommunicator Emergency Response Task Force, and it's quite a honor to get the call to ask if your employees can go and fill in on this. And Savannah and Eve are members of our tactical dispatch team, and that's what they do. They, they actually train for this stuff, and they were ready to deploy. So I appreciate them, I appreciate them coming today, and I really appreciate the opportunity to, to recognize them. The fire chief isn't here, I wouldn't embarrass him, I'm just going to embarrass Eve. The fire chief is deep, because Eve is going to work for him in emergency management. In a few weeks, he stole her from us. So, you know, but that's been her, her career goal, and she's been working for us for eight years.
Six years.
Six years. So she had the opportunity to go to work, and her, her degree is in emergency management. So we, we hope to be a willing Eve. She'd help her is a different thing, but. But if you would, you want me in graduating them in the state.
My guest here. Do you want to come up and get my picture with him?
Thank you.
He's getting pictures. You, you're not going to?
No.
Pretend not to hear. All right. Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to go.
Great report, great report. No one has signed up to participate in agenda items. Under the consent agenda, there are nine items. They're with me authorized, the chairman, to approve the actual cost gas facility relocation agreement with Atlanta Gaslight Company, an estimated amount of $96,503.55 to relocate existing natural gas facilities and provide a new series, I'm sorry, new services to the detention center and sheriff's office. Number two is designate Monday, December the 31st, 2018, as an additional holiday for Paulding County Board of Commissioners offices and employees. Number three is authorize the chairman to execute all related documentation to purchase a right-of-way, .24 acres and easement .13 acres for parcel one and parcel two, in the amount of $40,800 for the Ridge Road, Cochran Store Road, and Bob Hunting Road intersection improvement project. Number four is declare surplus an old wooden vial cabinet, unknown manufacturer or serial number, which is currently in service, in the service clerk of Superior Court Office, and allowing his tree and shelf to purchase said item for the amount of $50. Number five is appoint Number five is appoint Mr. Don Benson to the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities Region One Advisory Council to fill the unexpired term of Centennial Rings Code ending December 31st, 2019. Number six is declare items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through action of trade in the Sheriff's Department Car Unit 50, 1999 Ford Crown Vic, serial number 2FAFP71W9XX130541. Also in the Sheriff's Department Car Unit S-154, which is a 2003 Ford Crown Vic, serial Number seven is the Board of Commissioners to approve amending the planning committee 2018 schedule by adding a special call reading for November 27th, 2018. Number eight is to approve access agreement between Paulding County, Georgia, and Riverwood Homeowners Association Incorporated to provide for emergency entrance to Riverwood subdivision. Number nine is acceptance of streets for potential maintenance. Valentine Point and Post One, the streets are Boulder Run, Burke Street, Bowlin, Lanyard, and Bowlin Ridge. Would any of the commissioners like the place, any of these items in our regular business? Here in none, I will move on with the agenda. The whole business, we have none in new business. Number one is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Douglas County for 50% of required funding for the Baker's Bridge Road, Doris Road, High Point Road, and Sweetwater Church Road intersection improvements project. Mr. Jones?
Good morning. Good morning. Let me give you a little background on why we're doing this. This is actually in post three, I think, on the agenda, and it was posted as post two, but we want to give Commissioner Collette a little due process to this. The intersection right now, it's basically on the Paulding-Dubglas line. It's currently signalized, however, there are no turn lanes on any approaches to the intersection. So right now, especially with left turns, they can back up at times as left turning traffic has to find acceptable gaps in the traffic street to make their turn. This is actually much worse for an AM, AM and PM pickup. Time period is when the intersection receives a heavier volume of traffic. You know, between discussions between Paulding DOT, Douglas DOT, we both acknowledge that something really needs to be done out there to fix this issue. We've been working with Douglas County basically to design and finance this project over the last couple of years. Paulding County's taken the lead in design engineering plans for this project and in consultation with Douglas County. Right now, we have a design that will add a southbound left turn lane on Baker's Bridge Road, and eastbound, or I'm sorry, westbound right turn lane on Sweetwater Church Road, and a short northbound left turn lane on Doris Road. These turn lanes are projected to make a large improvement to the traffic flow at this intersection. Right now, we're asking for y'all to approve an IGA with Douglas County. And the IGA is basically gonna lay out the financial requirements between the two counties, who's gonna manage the project and other assorted project-related items. In the IGA, Paulding County agrees to pay half the intersection cost with Douglas County. So our share is gonna be $400,000, estimated Douglas County's will be $400,000. Douglas County is asked to manage the project. So basically, we will be paying bills towards the destruction of this project. Right now, we're in the final stages of utility coordination, environmental work, hoping that this project can be let out within the next couple of months of construction. I'll be able to answer your questions.
I just want to thank you, George, and thank you and Scott, and I'd like to even thank Douglas County for this, like, George mentioned, it's actually in Douglas County, but it affects our residents. So we worked real hard. We started working late as soon as I got an office, then we, Scott, Marley, Marley, they got in your budget, so we could get it done. Thank you, Douglas County, and thank you, yeah, long time down.
Thank you, sir. New business number two is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-50, a resolution for the adoption of an ordinance amending the development regulations of Paulding County, Georgia, amending Article Nine regarding soil erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control. Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you, everyone, for letting me present this. This is a little bit of housekeeping. The state environmental protection division has a state model ordinance for soil erosion and sedimentation pollution control, and they have made some amendments. This is the fourth amendment, since we adopted the ordinance in 2000. 90% of this amendment deals with coastal marshlands, of which that link, we have none, but we are required to adopt the changes anyway. There are some changes, some minor changes, updating certification requirements for design professionals, a website address change, and shoreline protection adjacent to Lake Okonye and Or Lake St. Clair. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'll admit that we don't have any coastal marshlands that need to make the changes anyway.
Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. We have no one who has signed up any public participation for non-agenda items. So that is the conclusion of our regular business. We have executive session needed for real estate, personnel, and pending potential litigation. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for those reasons.
Make a motion we go into executive session for real estate, personnel, pending and potential litigation?
I have a motion by Mr. Calonel as our second discussion.
I'd just like to tell the public, I know there's quite a few folks that hang out during executive session. There's no way that we'll be back in here before 1:30. It'll probably be pushing just a few minutes before 2:00 in order to end it so that we can start the next meeting. Giving you a heads up now. It's supposed to be this way.
No motion in a second. Go into executive session. Hallows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Here is five over. We're gonna go into executive session. Call the work session back to order and report that no action was taken in the closed session. This time, just to announce that we'll begin the regular business voting meeting at 2:30. Intertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. To adjourn by Christopher Calonel, second by Christopher Collette. Hallows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.